Make sure it's So they just So were they asking you
Trying to
And that's just really weird because So who's in there? Uh, Breon. So not him as And they kind of weird just because they're Maybe last They're probably looking for people Yeah, right. Because it was the Well, our folks was It was not Cleveland, but yeah. She did like She did this What's her name? Spin the drill. Yeah, she is. That's what I just said. It's really nice. The kids are coming in this week. Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's just coming in. Yeah, man, I think it's Your family makes a lot of And this is probably it's a fun thing. Justin This is I didn't put any We must have the light
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sign in. There are one if you are allowed in three minutes to resume your initial comments. All meetings will be recorded audibly and visually. Roll call, please.
Miss Book?
Here.
Mrs. DePew?
Here.
Mr. Law?
Here.
Mr. McCowen will not be joining us this evening. Mr. Nagy?
Yes.
Mr. Zabrowski?
Here.
Mr. Lee will not be joining us. Mary Nella?
Here.
Mr. Herman?
Here.
And Mr. Ross?
Here.
So two are here.
Would you have any citizens requesting anybody sign in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyone else that wants to speak, sign in.
You know the
I'm Jane Garcia. I live in 5348 High Grove Road. I wanted to come here in my bathing suit and waterways. I thought better of it. I just wanted to make an announcement that if no good deed goes unpunished, then you have certainly you've certainly accomplished a very great deed. I think, you know, naysayers be damned. I think that this, all the residents of Whitehall owe all of you, the management, the elected officials, and everybody who works at this borough, a big thank you for the great accomplishment that you have. And I wanted to start by being the first person. Thank you.
We'll talk now about what you're up here for. This swimming pool improvement project, where we stand. And I better turn it over to Mr. Russell Lysel. Give them the
Well, thank you. Just need a quick summary of events that have occurred since last Wednesday's report. We have been meeting with Nicholson, recently to go over planning and scheduling, trying to help them, assist them on getting the pool completed as soon as possible. Contract team work, the Nellow representatives and Mickel representatives have been doing punchless items. We focus or ask them to focus their attention inside the buildings so that in the event that it doesn't hamper the doesn't hamper the opening of the building. So that is what they have been doing. Tom DiMarco is the Colling Creek contractor, has completed the section of sidewalk in the rear that's going to the lower lot. That work was completed earlier this week. Inches Nursery has assumed the responsibility and assisting Nicholson with the site grading. So the areas along that sidewalk were graded here today. There are only two slabs that were damaged as a result of the work from the last landscaping contractor. They will be replaced by the next week. Aqua Pool started the pool, started the filters, and so on. Last week on the, on the sixth, the manufacturer's representative was there to assist with that startup. They have continued addressing their punchless items. Good news to report is the Health Department did stop by last week and they completed their preliminary pool inspection also on the sixth. They plan to come back within a month after the pool was up and operational to do their operational inspection. Aqua Pool did install the depth signage markers today. They were delayed, but they were, it arrived today and they were installed after the material cures for 24 hours. The remaining portion or section of that pool will be filled the last eight inches or so. That's promising. Merritt Electric Merritt Electric completed the light pole holders and conduits along the reconstructed sidewalk, as I spoke about earlier. They have been grounding light pole bases and addressing punchless items. The electrical inspection was completed on July 11th. They plan to finish all of their work this week on the 14th. First American Industries, they are the plumbers. They replaced the existing gas line, as I reported last week. Existing gas line within the pool house that services the hot water tanks. That gas line was replaced and is completed today. It's now under a pressure test and we'll know the results of the pressure test tomorrow morning. If it's successful, then the gas to the site will be turned off tomorrow. They are also planning to install the damaged fountain again this week and they're looking to be completed. Hannah just gave me an update prior to the meeting that the Verizon line was installed and is functional as of this afternoon. Today, we received a scheduled update from Nicholson. They are projecting July 25th as the building. However, that schedule does contain three days allowance for weather. So critical items to remain to get the pool open. The building inspection is scheduled to occur tomorrow. The pool house gas pressure test, as I spoke about. We will know the results of that tomorrow, then work with people to have the gas turned off. The Health Department is scheduled to complete the inspection of the concession building on Friday. And finally, the last thing critical is Aqua Pool will then be training the staff on the operations of the pool. We anticipate that occurring early in the week. Once we receive the schedule, sorry. Once we receive the schedule from Nicholson this afternoon, we asked them to coordinate with Allegheny Fence. It seems like the schedule was built to do the final landscaping next week and then follow it with the fence to follow. So we asked them to coordinate with Allegheny Fence so that they can start installing the remaining sections of the security perimeter fence and gates outside of the landscape areas to be completed and before the landscaping is finished. Inches, the landscaper, the remaining work is certainly weather dependent. They have some fine grading left to do. And then solid, or I'm sorry, topsoil to be placed. The flat area around the pool on the upper level will all be sod. Sections below the walkway to the lower parking lot near the back, that'll be the conventional Stephen mulch. So we've asked them to place the topsoil as soon as they can. I understand it's to be delivered tomorrow. If the weather cooperates, then I would imagine they will release the sod for delivery. Essentially, they have 48 hours after the sod is cut to place it. So weather dependent. If we skirt the severe weather that hearing reports of tomorrow afternoon, hopefully the sod can be installed over the weekend. That's our plan.
Are you willing to work over the weekend?
Yes, that, that crew, that Inches, they have worked through the weekend here and they work from our dates. So they have been very cooperative with that. If the weather will cooperate with this, I'm confident that they'll be able to go and work through that and that is like landscape. And then again, once that landscaping is done, then the final section of fence can be installed.
I'm not worried about
So
I'm sorry.
If the weather cooperates slightly, it is possible. It will be the weather, the weather days as they projected in their schedule. So again, it is possible that a soft opening could be planned for the 27th of September. Boring the outcome over there or depending upon the outcome of the Allegheny Health Department inspections as well as the inspections. So that is as narrow or as a timeframe as I can give you. Saturday will certainly be no more. Tomorrow, Friday, certainly before next Monday.
What do we have to do to put a bomb under them?
I'm sorry.
Put a bomb under them. Now, they're, it's all going their way. There's something out there. What do we have to do? Do we have to threaten to be sued, arrested, or what? Let's pick him up. He would have gone. This is the living person. You're talking two hoards. When one's up there or one group's up there, another group's up there. You know, if they work like the fire company, when we come back from fighting the fire, which has 20 guys and maybe 30 guys at the bar. Clean everything, trucks, those that, that was like when any truck come out. There's a lot of people to do it. So what do we have to do? And then threaten in any way we can for them to say, oh, get the fencing people. We have their funds up there tomorrow. And have them put in all the fencing and get it done. But what's holding them back? Nothing.
Mr. Law, I would say the threatening effort or the pounding of the table that's occurred throughout the project.
I understand that. I'm not saying about you, but
We're just dealing with different, numerous traits. Their schedules, the resources that are available. But we're doing everything to do that.
Well, I believe you are. I believe that they can do what they want to do. And they're only really, really angry if you do this thing. You could have had a lot of people working double, triple weekends, more, yeah, than all weekends. But that just never happened because they wouldn't do it. They're the ones that are in control. Well, I hate to shock them, but we're in control. Maybe there's some legal way that our attorney can do something to get a whole lot less money than they want. And that's what the residents. We agreed that we think it's a great thing that we have every time that it's open. Great. Except they so deserve that. So how do we change this around in the next two days? By telling that, or maybe what we're going to do is, you know, degrade them from ever working in one hall or did for anything? Or or we have some kind of lawsuit or some kind of dollar amount that we can pull back from that. I just, I just think this is one thing after another at this tail end of this job. And I think, I think it's terrible, everybody. I just think we ought all complain. I know it takes time to build a $6000 pool. Well, they've had time, even though we started right at the beginning of COVID. My heart thing shut down and then everything else changes. And then the first thing you know, we're lying, get back to work. Well, that took two years. You know, yes, I'm done. But we're just
Will we let ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah. I was having trouble following this Nicholson
I'm saying your name first and address.
Sure. My name is Steve Gerson and I live at the residence of Whitehall, Mexico. I was having trouble following you related to this Nicholson Company, how do they? What's their role in the project?
Nicholson is the surety. The surety company, the bonding agent, or the representatives of the bonding company.
So they're a private contractor representing the bonding company that the bonded company brought in?
Correct. And essentially, they are completing the project now. There are no longer Nellow representatives on site.
I have a question for the solicitor. Can we, as a council, authorize the staff to settle, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking up. I'm thinking. Can we authorize the staff to choose the opening day within this time period? If work gets done a little sooner, can, or do we have to have another council meeting?
Well, your place council is next Monday. Great. So Mr. Russell Lysel, that's not going to happen for next Monday. We guess and certainly delegate that authority to the staff.
Well, that's my argument. I don't want to wait that long. I don't want to have the dragger stop this long. I think we drag it long enough down the road somewhere. It's all because you can't get them here to work. And now it's done. They made your money. I don't want, whatever we can do legally for them, actually fight this that we say, hey, you didn't, you got three days to get this job done or you don't get the
I think they have us over a barrel, but we can tell them that. But it's not going to get them to get it done any faster.
In terms of specific legal discussions, people approach them more exactly. You know, the guests who stayed at numerous meetings, there are liquidated damages in the contract for delay. And you have three times, it's about getting the work done, you can't use limitations this way between, you know, whatever lawsuit you do in terms of getting something done the next few days.
Well, this is a listener. Whatever legality we can't talk about, I understand that. The point is we need somebody with the big muscles and the big mood to say, you've taken this long enough and two people are working up there. Everything was going fine with the pool. It took a long time because of COVID and all the things we had. Now, all of a sudden, this three, four guys, oh, well, now we gotta hang a wire. Now we gotta do this. I think you're right, Kathy. I think we should actually fight right now, hard as hell, and say, we're opening that pool up. If people want to come around and walk around and look at it. You go to string a wire, you string that wire, you turn that pool over. And you string that wire, you string that, wherever it is, it takes two guys to sit up doing it. I, I'm, I'm not accepting it. I'm doing the damn thing. I'm sorry. Excuse my French.
Eric Crane, I have a question. 301 South 2 Drive. I mean, I understand that, like, the landscapers and the fencing and the men have to work in the same area, so they can't really be there at the same time. But why should the concession stand keep its health inspection and keep the pool from being, the pool from being opened up as a pool?
It's just It's just one of the steps.
But I mean, but, but does that
Correct.
Does that, I mean, you close the concession stand till it's, till it's inspected. That should delay the pool opening.
Right. It's just a milestone.
Right.
But you certainly, we have to go through the building inspections. We have to finalize the site security vents for the Sorry.
Is it the, is that the county inspection?
Or ours? It's two companies. The Health Department inspection, right? They completed the pool inspection. So now it's the Mr. Russell Lysel, you should go and speak out. It's right back here. It's the building inspection, Mr. Law.
So you were talking about the Health Department coming in, the inspection of the snack shop. That was, you were just giving a progress report. You were saying that that's, you know, preventing the, preventing the pool from, from opening out. This, the, the fencing is probably the critical thing in terms of opening the pool for that, when I refer to that.
Well, there, there's the fencing and then there are miscellaneous components that Aqua Pool, the pool contractor needs to finalize so the pool cannot function safely. Punchless items.
Right. So just, I, I took some notes. I want to make sure so I can talk about this to where we might call. So there'll be a building inspection report. Building inspection of the pool house, is that right? This Thursday. Then on Friday, there's an inspection of the concession stand. Again, that's not the totally thing. And then the landscaping, which, what might be holding is that. The, the ordering of the, of the sod for the upper level.
The only thing that would hold the landscaping up would be
Alright, so and they're, they're scheduled to do that like early next week, you say?
Surely it's Friday.
Oh, Friday.
I anticipate it will be here tomorrow.
Okay. Alright. So those are all, all really good things. And then, so if the landscaping goes in and then the fencing goes in after that, what, what critical thing would remain?
Training of the staff to operate the pool.
Alright. So is, is there any reason why, you know, like what would hold that? Could happen tomorrow?
I don't believe that that could happen tomorrow. I believe one of the the managers that would be handling that is on vacation. They won't return until Monday.
So Monday, so, well, you know, people
Well, you said Monday.
Alright, so Monday, so Monday starting the 17th, we'll have that first time there to train the staff. How, how long does that take you to
I, well, that's the day.
Day, okay. So now we're, now we're at one Monday. So so it's conceivable by the time, you know, we have our next meeting, we could you're saying at the latest, it would be, the projection is the 25th and could happen earlier. As early as the 22nd. Kathy's suggestion is that we authorize the staff to, you know, open the, to, to make the decision to open the pool, communicate that to the electric officials. That authorization would be made at the next, at the next week because we're not going to get all these things done before the next year.
Because one guy will come in and then it'd be a day pass after that. And then another guy will come in and another day will pass after that, instead of putting themselves together like we did as firemen all the time.
How long is the
I'm sorry, it's two days.
Two days fencing.
That fencing, if I'm
So let's say, hold on, so let's say if the sod goes in Friday and over the weekend, the fencing starts, would they be prepared to start Monday?
If all the materials are available, yes.
Okay.
But as far as
So at the, the next meeting, again, we could be making announcements just like this, this is going to begin, right? If everything lines up and falls into place, given, is there anything else that I didn't mention that is important in the decision whether to open it forward? Any other inspections? Okay, so
We're close, Phil. We're close. We are, we are close. And remember now okay, remember the contractor is gone. Everybody understands this. The contractor who originally, you know, entered the contract to build the pool is no longer involved. You get a surety company to protect yourself, to, you know, to make sure that it does stay on a timely manner. And we're now dealing with, you know, a new entity representing the suret, right? But so might be God. That's only this will go to the 28th. No, it won't. Come see, say. Well, no. So relying on our experts. We just went through what each I understand that. Everybody, I understand. That's not making, that's not solving the problem. You can hear the problem, but you need the problem solved. And solve it as being tougher, stronger, and demanding, okay? Or maybe they don't get paid, or maybe we throw another lawsuit at them, or whatever it's going to take. You cannot sit here and keep quiet and let them keep saying, since the first in the month. Well, there's one more little thing here. There's one more little thing here. Today, you had to put in a couple cables or something. What does that mean that you can't open the pool through it? If a guy's putting in a cable, let it run around while the people are swimming. The other thing is, we have to start thinking about what can happen at the end of the season? Is there enough good weather that we can find that people, as we discussed at one before, we can actually prepare and go further in, in September, the weather permits?
Can I ask a little question? Sure. I mean, the president controls, you can ask. As president, we have a question.
But that's, yes, I'll let you ask a question that I think the media will get out of control. I keep doing that, so I'm going to make that statement right now. Go ahead.
How long is the, this Nicholson company, this representative bonding company, how long has, have they been on site? When did they start?
I don't have the exact date, sir, but I I'm gonna say about eight months.
Eight months?
Yes. Like, I've been here for eight months. Not that we're still representatives of Uh, now that we're still representatives of, um, Nello, the contractor, a little bit, um, here during that time.
When did, I think you would know when, when did Nello start?
Uh, approximately, uh, two and a half, three weeks ago.
Okay, so see, the contractor was on site with the surety, he probably had a problem, was making sure that the contractor did the work and, and, you know, uh, and pushing the, the contractor, as we would expect. Nicholson, just from understanding clearly, you said Nicholson's been on site for around a day, almost, approximately.
Now, he's not our problem, the problem was way laid by all these little things and nobody shows up to do them for an extra day or so because they don't care. So we're the ones that are being hurt and our residents are being hurt. That's our responsibility. So I'm actively against what they're doing. I don't know how you can force them to have somebody here. Two or three different companies here tomorrow, the next day, and Saturday to complete most of this stuff. So we can get manager learning and people prepared to enjoy this pool. And how do we figure out, can we go further? To give everybody a chance to use the pool a little bit more into September. I know September starts to get cold, but if you have warm days, you know, you never know when a warm day is going to get like that in September. Could be the whole month. But if we can have the people, the safety swimmers and all that we have to have, then we ought to think about that. Because this is such a tremendously beautiful pool and has so many amenities that we should not stop fighting hard. And I suggest that as a solicitor, the engineer, he can't do things unless contractors, someone has something to do, how to do. They've been looking at this pool the whole time to make sure it's built correctly. Is there any problems? I don't know, but, but I don't mind, you can build 3 million, $300 million building and you have problems. We have people in the road who that are, that kind of stuff. I'm in, in the party department. But when you know those things happen all the time in construction, you have to be able to prepare to come and make an end. But they're just dragging, believe me, they're all dragging at this point in time, never find before. They're dragging and I don't care what anybody has to say.
Because of that, it sounds like the pool cannot open before, at the very earliest Tuesday, the 18th. Probably not if five cohorts have to come in and train. I'm seeing the manager saying he needs two days, three days to train, at least two. That we can't possibly open before Thursday, the 20th? Could we hope for Wednesday, the 19th? Because that's your training, uh, uh, time I'm talking about. You need Monday and Tuesday, or you need the pool to be done so they can train.
The whole standard.
No, they're still.
The still in Dallas stuff has been not being done. You can't.
Okay, so in other words, we can't make it, it's not going to open before the 19th. We can make a decision at that meeting. And hopefully, that decision will be open on morning of the 20th, noon on the 20th. Hopefully, I, I don't know. You know as much as I do out there.
You can see there's just a few things to go, they're, they're scheduled. And, you know, I think the message here is that we want everything to be done, uh, as soon as possible.
And we definitely need five cohorts trained to do, to where they need to be because this is a whole new system for them. They, they do need training, okay? And we will hopefully tell you next Wednesday some really good news. Before then, I'm going to be really cool. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? So it's, uh, second? Okay, it's the move to second and all in favor, stay on. Uh, thank you all for coming.